Good morning, everyone. Welcome. I'm John Colwell, Chairman of the New York Power Authority, and happy to be joined virtually today by my fellow board members, Nakandri, Balboni, McKibben, and Trainer, as well as you can see a reduced number in our White Plains Office boardroom and others joining us virtually as well. So a warm welcome to everyone and glad to see everyone remains safe and healthy in these incredibly challenging and difficult times and circumstances. This is the scheduled meeting, as otherwise been duly noticed by open meetings law. And with that, I'm pleased to once again call the joint meeting of the Power Authority and Canals to order. I think everyone's had an opportunity to review the materials, including the agenda for today, and unless anyone has thoughts and ideas on amendments to that agenda, I'd ask for a motion to approve it as presented.
So moved?
Second. Heard a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. As we typically do, we will start the meeting in executive session. Under the circumstances, I expect the session to be a tad longer than normal. If I could, I'd ask for a motion to conduct such session to discuss our financial and credit history and matters regarding public safety and security pursuant to Section 105 of the Public Officers Law.
So moved.
Thanks, Dennis. Second. Thanks, Michael. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We will move to executive session and be back with you in a bit. Thank you very much. Welcome back. We're now ready to resume our meeting in open session. I ask for a motion to do so.
So moved?
First and second. Thank you very much. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And as always, no votes were taken during our time in executive session. In terms of our typical contractors list and conflicts of interest, we're all polled in advance. Unless anyone has other changes, additions, deletions to that list, I will otherwise move forward. Given the significance and severity of where we find ourselves today, you will not see us follow our traditional presentation format. Instead, the bulk of our meeting will be focused on what the pandemic means to us, NiPA, how we're positioned to respond to that, what we're doing to ensure we support not only our team, but our customers and all constituents across the state. So Gil will lead us in a dialogue and discussion that I'm confident will well display the strength of this organization, his leadership, and our preparedness to be responsive under incredibly challenging and extreme circumstances. So with that, Gil, the floor and the podium is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, trustees. Good morning, staff and the public. Today, I would like to focus on our response to the COVID-19 crisis. And so I will cover what our focus is, what we're doing enterprise-wide here at NiPA and Canals, the activities and the communication that we've been having with our customers, how we're managing our finances. We have a couple of very significant board actions that we will be requesting today. And we had earlier last week a meeting of the Board's Finance Committee. And so our Chair, Tracy McKibben, will be reporting the balance of those actions that were recommended and approved in her committee. And then I will end with some final remarks. So our focus, our focus, as has always been, is to lead. We lead because we have the size and the scale to respond to crisis. We are the largest state-owned electric utility in the United States, and we are the backbone of the power system in New York. We produce up to 25% of electricity in New York, and we own a third of the high-voltage transmission system. As always, we serve that role of being the convener and the coordinator of response when it comes to emergencies. Whether it was the recession during 2008, 2009, where we worked extremely closely with our customers to make sure that they ride out that deep recession, to helping out the Long Island Power Authority during Superstorm Sandy, and more recently, flying all the way to Puerto Rico and U.S. Virgin Islands to help them deal with a devastating Hurricane Maria. So our role has always been to lead. We are like, I would say, akin to first responders. We run to the fire, not away from it. That's the kind of organization that we are. So more recently, we have been holding meetings with the utilities here in New York, as well as the New York Independent System Operator, to compare notes, share resources in our response. And I'm happy to report that today we're executing a mutual assistance agreement with all private generators in New York State to make sure that our response is consistent, that we share resources, and we share personnel just in case we need to do so and help each other and keep the lights on in New York. The hospitals will not work. Oxygen will not be flowing in ventilators if there is no electricity. And we take that role seriously, and we take our leadership role very seriously in this state. In terms of our day-to-day operations, our number-one priority is to protect the health and safety of our employees, customers, our contractors, and the public where we have our facilities open for their use. We want to make sure that our generation and transmission system operates no matter what. And as I've mentioned, we will always be that coordinating force of all the utilities and generators in our state. We will work with state agencies to make sure that our response covers the appropriate areas, especially in the energy part of that response, and communicate and partner with our federal partners, like the Department of Energy and Department of Homeland Security. So let me touch on the things that we are doing enterprise-wide, both strategic and tactical. Let me start with strategic actions. We have activated our business continuity and pandemic plans and playbooks. At NiPA, we've always planned, we plan for emergencies. And, you know, in the past, we had SARS, we had Ebola and other type of pandemic plagues. And we have put forth plans, and we drill those plans every year to make sure that when an event such as this, COVID-19, that we are as prepared as we could be. We formed the task force back in January. You know, at NiPA, we buy a lot of equipment from Asia and Europe. And it's not unusual that we have employees doing quality control and factory acceptance testing in those regions. And when we got intelligence that this was happening from them directly, we acted and formed that task force in January, formed our incident command structure the following month, and now we're in full emergency operation mode here at the Power Authority and NiPA. This is a very unique pandemic, so we had to act very quickly to educate our employees, what are the risks? How do you prevent getting infected? So all the washing your hands, don't touch your face, social distancing, we were talking about that back in January. And of course, communicating with our employees was so crucial because we wanted them to make sure that they have all the facts so that there are no rumors, no speculation, and in many ways, lower the level of their anxiety. Tactically, this was an all-hands-on-deck mode at NiPA. We needed everybody. You know, we throw titles out the door, and we now wear our emergency response hats, and we have very specific roles in responding to this crisis. We mandated all nonessential employees to work from home, consistent with the governor's guidance. We paused all capital and operations and maintenance work, both at NiPA and Canals, and really just focused on work that ensures reliability and safety of our operations. We closed publicly facing facilities, like visitor centers, across the state. And more recently, the past few days, we decided to sequester the most critical, mission-critical employees that we have in our power plant and transmission control centers. Before that, and still continuing today, we are doing wellness checks and temperature checks for those employees who still need to go to work and fulfill their duties. If I can just ask Joe Kessler very quickly, our Chief Operating Officer, to talk a little bit about our sequester-in-place program. Joe?
Sure. Thank you, Gil. Hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you, Joe.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so what we did is, as Gil pointed out, there were a number of essential roles that we had to continue to have report to our operating sites. Among those, as you can imagine, are actually the operators who operate the equipment, where there's an actual knob or valve or button that has to be pressed at the plant itself. Some of our security staff, and then there's a few ancillary support functions that have to go along with those folks as well. We took the lead from some of the best practices we were hearing from other entities around how to protect those individuals and decided on a strategy of sequestering that staff, those essential folks onsite. Worked very closely with our labor partners in the IBEW and UWA. Had great cooperation from them, expressed a lot of concerns on what this might look like, gave health screenings to those folks. And what we did is determined a minimal staffing at each location to keep that essential operational processes working. So basically, two shifts in a complement of a tour, if you will, that is really designed, based on what we had heard, best practice around 30 days of deployment. We have flexibility in that 30 days, and we are constantly pinging the environment to see what the best practices are for that as well, both for the well-being of those operators and for the just mitigation of the risk of people contracting the illness. And we still have some flexibility there. So essentially, it's the operators, security, some ancillary staff in two separate shifts that are deployed, and what I'll say, housed inside the fence of our facilities in six locations to make sure that we can keep those essential functions going. The general idea of having the two separate facilities or amenities in each location is that each one of those shifts generally, the design is so that they don't even really know they're there, so they don't have any, excuse me, any interaction between each other in case something was contracted while they were there. We can continue with another shift. And we have protocols in place, not only for the wellness screenings on the way in, but continuous checking while they're in this sequestration, and also protocols in place in terms of if there is someone who comes ill in that sequestration, what would we do? And also, if they have a family, that person that they need to be removed from sequestration to attend to, how would we manage that? So great collaboration with our partners in HR and legal to make sure, and of course, labor, to make sure we have everything and all the Ts crossed and Is dotted from that perspective. It was a lot to ask. There were a lot of questions, as you can imagine, but that's generally how it's working right now. We just finished deploying everybody through the weekend, and there's going to be some lessons learned, some early communications. We're in touch with the folks, as Gil pointed out routinely, and with the labor business managers as well to make sure that if they're hearing anything directly, that we're very responsive to the amenities that these folks will need. They're definitely sacrificing for us. So if anybody has any questions, that's basically what the concept is.
Thank you, Joe. Our operators in our power plant control rooms and our transmission control centers are akin to pilots or air traffic controllers in the airline industry, and they're very, very critical to the safe and continuous operation of our assets. Now, let's move on to our customers. We called every customer to check their status. And we're monitoring how they're using energy daily. And if there are any changes to normal operation, we would follow up and call them and see what's been going on. We did pause customer-sided work to protect our employees, to protect our contractors, and also to protect our customer. But there are some projects, especially in healthcare facilities. You know, we do a lot of HVAC work. We do a lot of lighting work, controls work in hospitals. And for those projects, our customer asked us to continue and make sure we complete those work to support the demands that are put on them by this pandemic. We're also working with local governments to make sure that we're supporting their operations. Now, with all of that, and all of the calls that we've been having, very, very clearly, especially from our economic development customers, that this is very, very difficult to their business. And so we heard from them. They're also struggling with all of the uncertainty. They anticipate that they will experience financial distress and maybe, in many cases, difficulty in accessing the credit markets. And so, you know, we've been listening to them, and we've been contemplating about how we can be of help to them, similar to actions we have done back in the deep recession of 2008 and 2009. So from a financial perspective, I've mentioned from the beginning that we do have the strength and the scale and expertise to respond to this crisis. This is not our first crisis. And so we are confident that we can weather the storm, that we are well-positioned, especially because we have a strong balance sheet and a very, very good rating. With that said, we are not immune to what's going on in the markets, to what's going on in our communities. NiPA's revenue and gross margin will be under pressure because of very low prices and very low demand. We are not immune to the credit markets being volatile or even dislocated and disjointed at certain times during this crisis. We're hoping that the Federal Reserve and the federal government will be stepping in to help stabilize that market for the benefit of all. But the impacts of those markets have direct reverberations to NiPA. So what we have done in, under that scenario, when there is no forward visibility, the best strategy in our book is to stay in place and to pause some of our activities. So we paused all capital and O&amp;M projects at NiPA and Canals for six months. We, as I've mentioned, we're pausing our customer-sided energy solutions projects, our discretionary expenses, to make sure that we conserve cash and capacity while there is no forward visibility. But on the other hand, in terms of our employees, what the message I would like to say is we need all of our employees now more than ever. And this is the time to lean in. At NiPA, I want to reassure that, you know, this is not, don't be afraid that, oh, do I have a job tomorrow? That's not where our mindset is at as NiPA. To be able to continue our role as a leader, we need everyone. All hands on deck, and we need everyone to lean in to help going forward, not only NiPA, but our customers and the communities that we serve. In fact, we expect to add a few mission-critical employees to shore up our team and to make sure that we can do the work that we need to do going forward. And when there are opportunities, when there's more visibility going forward, that we are going to be restarting our projects and strategic initiatives to advance our strategic plan and to advance the agenda of our state. Now, if we do all of these steps, this, what I would call temporary pause, that will give us additional capacity of approximately $500 to $600 million this year. So with that, we are proposing two very important actions today. But before we actually go to the actual introductions of those board items and resolutions, let me just describe them from a high level. Part of the budget that the Board of Trustees approved in December included a plan for NiPA to issue $950 million in debt to refinance our existing debt and to issue new debt to advance our strategic initiative. It also included, not mentioned here, an increasing of our capacity to issue commercial paper. But for us today, so from that baseline, to be able to meet the needs of our response to this crisis, knowing that there is no forward visibility, we are proposing that we increase that ceiling with an incremental or additional $550 million in debt, which will bring the total debt issuance that we have between $1 billion and $1.5 billion. The reason I'm giving a range is that we want to have the flexibility to determine that final amount based on market conditions. But the goal, the goal is to shore up our capacity, shore up our financial flexibility, to be able to do two things, to be able to deal with this crisis, to be able to deal with the uncertainty and the lack of forward visibility while helping our customers. We believe that our role is to do all three. So that's proposal number one. Proposal number two is to help our customers specifically. We propose to cancel the automatic escalators or rate increases built into our rates for 2020. And we propose to provide a six-month deferral or forbearance for our customers to pay their electric utility bill to us. Specifically, let me just be clear, for our economic development customer. Recall, I mentioned earlier that our economic development customers are the ones who are really suffering and are worried about laying people off and really affecting the economic vitality of various communities across our state. So for us to be able to help in that process, hopefully, we can be helpful in preserving jobs and providing some level of economic stability in those communities by providing this forbearance. And then we would ask our customers to start paying us from month seven for an 18-month repayment plan to give them that breathing room in the short term. We think this is going to be very, very important. We did something similar back in '08 and '09, and we were able to partner with our customers and ride through the deep recession in this case. I, we expect it will be, maybe just as deep as that recession back in '08 and '09. So we are now going to the part where we will seek specific authority from the board. I would call on our CFO, Adam Barsky, to do the first item, and then Sarah Salati to do, our EVP and Chief Commercial Officer, Sarah Salati, to do the customer assistance program. Adam?
So as Gil mentioned, we're seeking today for the board to give us authorization to issue Series 2020 revenue bonds with the proposal to be in a range between $1 billion and $1.5 billion, depending on market conditions and timing and need, and to increase by $250 million, all revolving loan authorization, to bring it from $700 to $950 million. In the materials, we also...
Oh, sorry, Adam. Thought you were done.
I was going to say, in the materials, we give you a schedule as to when we would expect to be able to issue, given the work that's involved in making that happen. We are working right now to put all that in place, and we're looking to actually truncate the schedule where possible and hopefully move it up to the extent we possibly can. But this is, this is a conservative estimate, but we'd like to be able to do it sooner.
Tracy, as Gil mentioned early on, we had the lengthy finance committee meeting a week ago where we actively discussed our then-existing plans, which have been further modified based on that dialogue and the continuing evolving nature of the crisis, as well as the reality of the markets. You want to pick it up a bit and share a little bit of your thoughts and thinking or the dialogue that came out of the committee discussions relative to our need to optimize our liquidity position?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Adam laid out, you know, our hope is to approach this crisis and try to address any concerns about our financial strength is that we give ourselves as much liquidity optionality as possible. And the committee discussion was around, how do we create that? And as Adam laid out, there are two sort of strategies that we're approaching to give ourselves that sort of liquidity breathing room. One is around a bond issuance, and the other is about the expansion of our revolver facility. And so, you know, as the team laid out, Adam and Gil, around the need for this gives us the ability to continue to operate, we think, safely and effectively, as NiPA has done and would like to continue doing. So with the other steps around, you know, spending controls that we're looking at, we discussed that in the committee as well. So we think that this is, again, gives us that liquidity optionality as much as possible in the existing market that we're operating in. So that's what the committee discussed. And we think, you know, we fully support this effort and this work being done by the team and led by Adam.
And Adam, as you and the team have stress-tested, for lack of a better term, the balance sheet and the cash needs of the organization, adding that extra $500 million at this point, and I accept that none of us have anything close to, you know, clarity as to what the future holds, but you're reasonably confident the extra $500 million above and beyond what had been included in the original... had been included in the original plan should be sufficient to achieve what you foresee the needs and objectives to be, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I believe that we'll have ample liquidity sources at our disposal and having cash to meet our needs and be able to withstand a number of significant stress scenarios should they materialize, but we will be prepared for that. And in the event that they don't materialize, we'll be able to redeploy cash as we, if and when we resume our capital spending, and we always can always pay down our short-term debt so we can manage our position accordingly. But we believe this is prudent to be well protected against any unforeseen circumstances that could arise.
And with the timeline you've given us, we're talking early, mid-May for us to begin to be able to execute on some combination of accessing the markets. One, that's circumstantial. Two, I guess my own view, hopefully, the market volatility will have sorted itself out a little bit more by then, and hate to use the word stability, but at least said we'll minimize, hopefully, some of our execution risk by then, but only time will tell. So you talked about trying to accelerate. I mean, what's our ability to be prepared sooner than what you've outlined here?
So the, the two major gating items are just getting all of our due diligence documentation together so that we can mail an official statement, and the other is to approach the rating agencies and confirm our ratings before we can price our bonds. And the rating agencies have typically taken or asked for at least two weeks before they can affirm our ratings. And given the fact that there have been a lot of issuances on the sidelines, I think there will be a significant amount of requests into the rating agencies. So we're trying to be conservative to allow for that process to happen. But as soon as we can affirm our ratings, we would then be able to go ahead and price, market and price our bonds and then close on the bond issuance.
Okay. Others on the board, I know we were all involved in the Finance Committee meeting a week ago and have been in subsequent discussions. Any other questions you have of Adam or Gil before I ask for a motion relative to the issuance of additional bonds?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, then Tracy, can I ask you to make a motion as Finance Chair to adopt the Revenue Bonds Resolution?
Yes, if I could, I move.
I'll second it.
Second, thank you very much, Dennis. Unless there's any other questions, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Terrific. All right. Thanks very much, and Adam, appreciate all of your efforts and your team's efforts to get us to this point, whether it's the modeling, the analysis, the diligence, the preparation, your work with underwriters, et cetera. While there's much to be done, we look forward to a series of successful executions in the months ahead. So much appreciate all the efforts from you and your team.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we will keep you and the, and the other members of the committee continuously apprised as to the progress as we go along, and we'll come back and let you know exactly how we're able to execute.
Terrific. All right.
Thank you. So now I will ask Sarah Salati, our Chief Commercial Officer and Executive Vice President, to discuss and propose our Economic Development Customer Assistance Program. Sarah?
Good morning, Chairman, Trustees, and the public, and my colleagues. As you know, as Gil articulated, NiPA has a fundamental mission to support the economic stability and growth of New York State, as well as to lead by example. Our customers are a core focus for us currently, and in recognizing that, our economic development low-cost hydro programs supports the creation retention of over 400,000 jobs across the state, jobs that are needed more than ever now in this downturn. Specifically, our programs and economic development programs are supporting small, medium-sized enterprises across the state in the, in the order of magnitude of over 880. And so this particular requested trustee action would provide relief for, to them as they, as they weather the pandemic and the economic storm around us. So specifically, I would like to propose that the trustees approve two temporary measures to provide relief to recharge New York, Western New York, expansion power and replacement power, as well as preservation power customers, specifically to suspend the annual adjustment factor for rate changes that would otherwise be slated to take effect July 1st and stay in effect through June 30th of 2021. The currently projected increase, based on our tariff structure, is 0.5%. The second proposal is for our customers to be provided the option amid those economic development programs to defer their bill payments beginning March 2020 for up to six months within a repayment plan over 18 months that would be both interest and penalty-free.
I assume, Sarah, the timeframe proposals are, well, we will reassess as we go. Obviously, it's impossible at this point to know the severity and extent of the implications to our customers. So at this point, our first surf to the net is the six months of deferral and 18 months of repayment timeframe, but we'll reassess and evaluate as we go.
Yes, Chairman.
Okay.
We're in constant communication with our, with our customers, both in terms of their expectations around load, as well as their general view of of their businesses. And so, yes, we'll be in a position ongoing, as we are today, to, to assess what is best for them and, and in addition to supporting NiPA's bottom line financial stability.
Okay. Is there anything else that our customers have been asking for that we can be responsive to, or does this proposal address their key concerns at this point?
I think that this is a, this is a, you know, a very good approach for our customers. Again, they, there is a level of uncertainty out there, both personally and and within their businesses. And so them knowing that over the next six months, they will not be seeing a rate increase, nor will they be required to pay their bills is, is, as a level of uncertainty, of certainty for them in, in their, in their P and Ls that will enable them to, you know, deal with greater uncertainty beyond their energy consumption.
Sarah, is my assumption correct?
Hard to hear you, Judge.
Judge, lean into the microphone a little more.
Customer Assistance Program would include those farmers that are qualified for customer assistance in the operation of their, for example, their farms and things like that.
Those, those, Judge, those discounts will continue, correct?
Thank you.
This is probably the, the most significant customer bill payment forbearance that I know, certainly in New York State, but maybe even nationwide. But we believe that this is a necessary step for NiPA to do. As Sarah mentioned, our economic development customers support over 400,000 jobs in our state, and it's, it's critical that we, we help them ride out this, this steep downturn. And, and our role is to, to be with them. We've always been with them. We've done it in the past, and we want to tell our customers, and we want our customers to know that NiPA will do everything in its power to, to be helpful to them during this crisis.
I'm pleased and proud that we're, you know, being as proactive as we can be here. So well done, Sarah, for your continuous outreach, and Gil and team, obviously enthusiastically embraced the proposal. So unless there's any other questions for Gil or Sarah, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the Customer Assistance Program resolution as presented to us.
So moved.
Thanks, Dennis, second. All right, thanks, Judge. Unless there's any other questions, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carried. Terrific. Again, Sarah, thanks so much for your work, and continue to lean in for the benefit of our customers. That's what we're here to do. So well done. Okay, Gil, want to pick it back up with the balance of...
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe Tracy, our Chair of Finance Committee, will report out the rest of the items that were discussed during our Finance Committee meeting last week. Tracy?
Yes, thanks, Gil. The Finance Committee, as we alluded to earlier, we met on March 23rd, and we considered four information technology items. And just to be clear, these are, you know, consistent with our efforts to try to, you know, conserve resources, as well as our steps to prioritize areas that we think are critical to, to the authority. The four items that are under Financial Operations are, again, around information technology, with much of the workforce working remotely. As many companies have experienced, this public health emergency reinforces the need for NiPA to continue its investment in software and hardware, as well as cyber resilience. The Finance Committee therefore recommends that the board approve the following items consistent with trying to prioritize these IT expenditures. The first is capital expenditure in the amount of $18,453,400 for the Core IT Infrastructure Life Extension and Modernization LIM program. The second is the capital expenditure in the amount of $18,978,307 for the Common Appliance LIM program. Third being the expenditure in the amount of $30,640,958 for the Cyber Resilience Program. And then the final, fourth and final, is the expenditure in the amount of $10,816,679 for the Data Management Program. Again, all consistent with helping us prioritize the efforts to address the new needs of the workforce as more of the workforce works from home and, and rely on extremely strong IT infrastructure. I'd like to now move, ask for a motion to adopt these items.
So moved.
Oh, I'll let, I'll let Tracy, Tracy make the motion, Dennis will take yours as a second, okay? And we, again, we had ample opportunity to discuss this a week ago, so unless there's any other questions, I'll just call for the vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carried. Terrific. Thanks so much, Tracy. Appreciate that.
Financial operations that the committee discussed, there were four items that we discussed regarding the financial operations of the authority. We discussed and voted on one of the items, which was revised a few moments ago, the issuance of the Series 2020 Revenue Bond, which Adam presented. The Finance Committee recommends that the board approve the three additional items, the first being the adoption of the amended Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Investment Policy Statement, which is to support the continued growth and to strengthen the fiduciary control of the trust. The second being the appointment for a period of five years of a pre-qualified pool of senior managers and co-managers and selling group members to originate, underwrite, and sell the authority's debt obligations and provide other services as requested by the authority. And then the third and final is a release of additional $22.8 million of funding in support of operations of the Canal Corporation in the calendar year 2020. Again, all items that the committee discussed and think are prudent in terms of prioritization in the current environment.
Any questions for Tracy? Again, we had ample discussion a week ago. Otherwise, I'll take Tracy's comments as a motion to adopt. If I can have a second. It's all like the judge is the second. A call of vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. All right, terrific. Thanks very much, Tracy. Appreciate all your work, helping to coordinate and navigate what obviously are key and critical efforts and initiatives. So thanks very much. All right, Gil, you want to wrap things up before we move on to the rest of our business?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. So in, in all of this, our, you know, the way I've been thinking about where we are and where we're headed, NiPA, we have always been a leader, and we will always lead. That's our DNA. We are built strong by design in all ways, in many ways. We have the best assets here in the state of New York. We are financially strong. We are battle-tested. And as I've mentioned before, this is not our first crisis. This is something bigger and probably more uncertain, but we've been preparing and are prepared as can be. We will always protect our employees in every way. And as shown by the action taken by the board today, we will always be there for, for our customers. I want the Board of Trustees to know that you can count on me, as the President and CEO of this organization, to lead this organization through this crisis. You can count on my executive management team, the best executive management team that you'll ever have in the utility sector, to lead their various business units in weathering this storm. And I want the people of New York to know that they can count on NiPA to play its role, to play its leadership role in navigating through this crisis, in working with our partners, the other utilities here in New York State, the New York Independent System Operator, the private generators and power plant owners across the state. We will, NiPA will, help convene and coordinate to make sure that we have a unified response that will benefit the people of the state. You know, I've been really, really in awe of the NiPA employees and the Canal employees in the way they have stepped up, in the way they have executed, in the way we have been aligned and on the same page to respond to this very uncertain and in a way scary crisis. But just being with them and seeing them day in and day out, whether in person or talking to them remotely, I know, and I'm very confident that we will overcome this crisis because I know that we will do it together. And I know that in the end, that we will be stronger and the better for it. So again, thank you very much to all of our employees. Thank you very much to you, our Board of Trustees, for your support, for your advice and guidance every step of the way. It's been very valuable to us, especially the leadership team, in helping to steer this NiPA ship. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Gil. Can only echo the sentiments, and on behalf of the board, these are no question incredibly uncertain and scary times for the entire nation, not just the entire state. And while New York City, New York State's the epicenter of the moment, there's no question this is already and will continue to rip, affect for all. So hopefully, the tone, the tenor, and the, and the pace that you and the organization are setting will provide a good example for others. We appreciate the, the steady hand, readily agree. It's an organization that's battle-tested and one that responds, you know, when the bell rings and does it in an exemplary way. So would reiterate your comments in terms of the confidence and... in terms of the confidence, uh, and, uh, uh, your gratitude, uh, to you and your, your team and the entire organization for the great work you've already done and frankly, uh, the weeks and months ahead of, uh, even, uh, tougher uphill climb. But, uh, no, once again, uh, we will, uh, prevail. With that, any other questions or comments from other members of the board before we move forward the balance of our agenda?
No.
Okay. Well, again, Gil, team, thanks very, very much. I know we will continue to stay, uh, in tune and, and, uh, in touch, uh, with your efforts along the way. And, uh, we want to ensure as a board, we do everything we can to support and enable you to do what's necessary for the benefit of, uh, our customers and the, the state and all those who are otherwise, uh, counting on us. All right. Um, in addition to, uh, crisis management, uh, we have done our best to carry on some of the other required business. Uh, we've already referenced the Finance Committee of a week ago. Uh, we also had, uh, an Audit Committee, uh, meeting last Thursday. Uh, Judge, uh, Chair, I would, uh, ask you to report out, uh, the discussions of, uh, that session, please.
Chairman, uh, I want to make the committee's motion right forward this morning.
We're having a tough time hearing you, Judge. Sorry.
It's consolidated for the year ending December 31, 2019. And now I is the Corporate Secretary to submit a report to the Governor, Legislative Leaders, State Comptroller and the Authority of, uh, for one district, 800 of the, of these laws. This is amended by Public Authority Accountability Act of 2005. And the Chris Wood Regulations adopted the Office of the State Comptroller. The trustee also requests to approve and authorize posting of a report of actual versus budgeted dollars the year 2019. The authorities recite and move.
All right. Thanks, Judge. Uh, hopefully everyone caught enough of that. I know we all participated, uh, given that at this point we're a committee of the whole. Um, in terms of, uh, the actions coming out of that committee. Hello?
I don't know what that is.
Well, um, we'll try to talk over it and, uh, I'll ask for a motion, uh, to adopt the committee's recommendations as just summarized, uh, by the judge. Or I'll take the judge's, uh, summary to be a motion to adopt the committee's recommendation. If I could have a second?
Second.
Thank, thank you, Dennis. Uh, unless there's any other questions, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carried. All right. Thanks very much, uh, Judge. Um, this morning, uh, before our full board session, we had a Governance Committee Report. Chairman Trainer, would you, uh, care to, uh, summarize the outcomes of, uh, that discussion for us, please?
Sure. Thank you. Uh, during the Governance Committee meeting today, we heard an update from Joseph Grislow, Vice President and Chief Ethics and Compliance Officer, who discussed NIPA's practices that are in place to educate and manage the organization's fulfillment of its obligations under the New York State Ethics Laws. The committee further adopted a consent agenda that included minutes and a number of NIPA Canal Annual Report. Those reports are now before you for adoption and include, first, the disposal of personal property guidelines in annual report. Second, procurement and contracts guidelines and annual review of open procurement service contracts. Third, real property guidelines and annual report. Fourth, real estate reports. Fifth, certain staff policies. Sixth, 2019 annual board evaluations. I now ask for a motion to adopt the Governance Committee's recommendations.
And as I otherwise do, I'll take, uh, your summary to be just that, the motion, uh, Dennis. Uh, as committee chair, if we could have a second to Dennis's motion?
Second.
Second.
Hey, thanks, Tracy. Uh, unless there's any other questions, uh, all in favor of adopting, uh, the policies and, uh, uh, reports we otherwise, uh, received earlier today, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carried. All right. Uh, lastly, uh, our consent agenda. Again, uh, always, uh, robust and substantive. Hopefully everyone had an opportunity, uh, to review the materials that were presented to us. Uh, and unless you have, uh, questions regarding any of those, uh, items or matters, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Have a second? Uh, any questions of anyone? Otherwise, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Uh, that concludes, uh, our meeting, uh, today. Again, appreciate everyone's, uh, efforts, time and, uh, attention. Uh, thank you, uh, to, uh, NIPA's IT team for facilitating and enabling, uh, an overall efficient, uh, virtual, uh, session. Our next, uh, scheduled meeting, uh, is not until, uh, May 19th. Uh, we do anticipate, uh, holding, uh, an interim meeting, uh, probably within the next 30 days in light of, uh, the evolving and, uh, significant matters that we're all managing and, uh, everyone would be duly noticed, uh, assuming such a session, uh, is conducted. Um, with that, uh, appreciate again everyone's, uh, attendance and efforts and I will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Dennis. A second?
Second.
I know there's a second out there somewhere. Tracy, thank you. All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion, uh, carried. Our meeting is adjourned. Have a great day, everyone. Stay safe, uh, stay healthy, stay distant. Uh, appreciate it very much.